Sorry, Angela was late this morning.
Good morning. This morning I just wanted to walk through quickly with you in an amendment for the current fiscal year that we're in. You know, we just wrapped up next years, but now we have to revert back to this year. So this will just get us into the right spot to finish up the fiscal year that ends on June 30th. In the general fund revenues, the significant changes include some changes in federal funding. Most of that is for the emergency rental assistance pass-through program. That's money is the second phase, second installment that we did receive like last week. So we'll be hanging on to that until we have authorized uses of that. Also, the FEMA reimbursements for COVID I had budgeted to come in this year. It looks like they're not coming in quite as timely as I had anticipated, so we'll be rolling that forward and anticipate it next year instead. And then increased funding from the Department of Health and Human Services for various public health programs that included some disease intervention, cancer screenings, miscellaneous programs. In the jail and courts, we are seeing increased revenue for service of civil papers and increased revenue from care of prisoners, also from jail commissions and commissary and clerk of court fees. And that's miscellaneous interest, miscellaneous revenue changes. Interest earnings are going up significantly to by 2.6 million. They're budgeted originally around 3 million, so now they're around 5 and 1/2. On the flip side, as interest earnings go up, our recording fees go down as the housing market slows. So a decrease in recording fees. And then some additional adjustments on grants and donations, mainly a HUD grant being budgeted. On the expense side of the general fund, we are seeing increased expenditures for jail operations. This includes overtime, and that is partially offset by reallocating the unused appropriation for part-time detention officers. So we're mitigating somewhat of the increased cost of overtime. And then increased costs for food and supply at the jail as well as out-of-county placements. Some miscellaneous expenditure changes in the general funds, grant adjustments, so that would include expending that HUD grant, some other grants that came in, and increased risk management expense of about 1 million. That includes some settlements, some attorney fees, and also we're switching the body cameras from being called a general fund expense to a risk management expense. And then increased costs for IT maintenance and subscription of about 900,000. This is a change from kind of buying programs instead, now switching to paying an ongoing annual fee for the programs. In the other funds, the revenue, on the revenue side, we see additional changes in the grants. This is mainly in conservation. They had budgeted to receive a Destination Iowa grant this year for about 3.4 million. Looks like that will come in next year instead. So again, we'll roll that one forward to next year.
But they did get it?
They had budgeted? I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I didn't ask that question. It was budgeted 3.4. They're saying now it's not anticipated this fiscal year. And there were additional changes on the interest earnings. That's mostly interest earnings on the conservation bonds. And then budgeting for 500,000 coming in from Broadlawn's for in-kind contribution for behavioral health services. On the expense sides, an increase in the debt service expenditures. That's something we had planned in order to use some fund balance in the debt service fund. And then we are proceeding with courthouse roof replacement and the purchase of Cherry Street parking lot for an increased expense of 1.1. And economic development, an increased expense there. Part of that is the project, the, what was it? The NDC River View project that we budgeted for next year. We actually paid it this year instead. So again, that's just a timing change. And then some grant adjustments there as well, and increased IT project cost. Just some additional information for you. If you look at the budget in total, this amendment, there are some significant changes of both revenues and expenses. That's mostly me just moving ARPA money. So we had set it all into Fund 32, the ARPA fund. We're now moving that over into the general fund for lost revenue replacement. But while sitting in the general fund, we did set it up into a separate business unit so that we can track the use of those funds. That will still be used for our projects, the four categories that we originally talked about, but it's just all in the general fund now so that we have less reporting requirements.
And you'll, and we'll still be able to track it because you set up a different
Correct.
number or whatever the hell.
Yep, different number, yep.
Good.
I'm just, I think it's significant to do this too, because I don't know if anything is going to come with this federal debt service legislation.
Ceiling capital.
There's some proposed language to clawback unused ARPA funds. This way, we have used all of our funds, and they wouldn't be eligible for any clawbacks should that legislation pass.
So the state, as I understand, has quite a bit of ARPA funds. That mean they're going to give it away, give it back, have to give it back?
Well, that's, that's for the state to figure out.
Oh, my God.
If they keep it ARPA funds.
They could possibly.
Wow. Okay.
So with this amendment, all of our fund balances do comply with our policies. And next steps are just next week, we'll have a resolution to authorize a public hearing, and the public hearing will be on May 30th.
So this is, for this fiscal year, the, all these things?
Correct.
So this economic development project you mentioned, River View or River Trace?
It was the River View, NDC.
It's a cold storage.
Yes, yes.
Cold storage buildings. We have the partnership.
Between the city.
Between the city and the county.
And NDC.
The properties along the river right there that were, have become vacant over a number of years. Like, so, yeah, they're gonna.
The entrance where you go into River View Park?
Yeah, what are we doing with it again?
We're buying it.
Oh, it's just purchase price?
I think so.
That's splitting it with, I don't know if we split it, or I can't remember exactly. Yeah, NDC's, yeah, yeah. Retail, I think mostly there's a number of interested parties, misunderstanding, I guess.
And the courthouse roof replacement purchase of Cherry Street is only 1.1 combined. Not too bad. Okay, thanks.
TJ, I was gonna follow up to you, but since you're here, I'll ask you the question. So I understand a lot of these change in contracts have shifted from.
Sure.
To purchasing and servicing versus kind of leasing. And some of that's a result of companies being bought out.
Yeah, so not only do we have software as a service, is a big pressure point in our industry where you're going from an initial investment with a small amount of maintenance every year in perpetuity, to a reduced amount upfront, and then a much larger subscription, if you will, over time. And over time, that puts a lot of pressure on your budget. So we're making those adjustments as we go. But the merger acquisition piece is a big deal for us. A really good example is we have, we have about $800,000 worth of physical storage around our environment and the different data centers that handle all of our data storage. We bought that five years ago with a, with a life of, expected life cycle of about 10 years before we would have to phase it out. Well, we're in year five, and the company, which is a giant company, got acquired by a much larger company, and they're phasing that out. And so we're end of life at the end of this year. So when those mergers and acquisitions happen, we go from having a 10-year plan to, oh goodness, we have to get new storage in eight months.
Okay.
And so those things are, those things, when the economy gets hard and these companies have to find creative ways to meet their bottom line, they get into that merger acquisition business, and then they try to phase out the customers of the old technology or the acquired technology and force them into their product line.
I think what I got confused was, you had a five-year contract, but a 10-year plan?
Yeah, we have a 10-year plan. The, what we bought was what we bought. And then we pay an annual meeting. It's just no big deal. It's a regular procurement process. But we planned on keeping that for 10 years. Well, in year five, when that company gets acquired, it's sort of up to the acquiring company to set the new terms. Most of them give you time to kind of get off, but as, as money gets tighter for them, they.
If I can ask you.
Yeah.
So if the terms of the contract extended beyond when they were acquired, they should still be accountable for those terms of the contract. But you're saying that contract had expired when they bought it, or?
Well, what you, yeah, so we own the, we own the gear. We bought it outright. And then we enter into an annual maintenance agreement that is auto-renewed forever, as long as we continue to use the product. But there is no 10-year contract or anything like that. That is the perpetuity cost of however long you want to stay on the environment. We know that that gear, you don't want to ride it more than 10 years before it starts to degrade, and you want to get into something newer. So we, you know, put that 10-year plan together. Well, if there's an acquisition in that first 10 years, it, and it happens in software as well as hardware. Sometimes the acquiring company says, you know, we'll give you three years to end of life it and get into something else. As money gets tight for these corporations, they escalate that. And they try to get you out of that environment and into theirs very quickly. And so that is happening. We're seeing that more and more recently as the economy starts to slow and interest rate prices and, and costs get higher for these corporations.
I just want to make sure we were taking all steps to enforce an existing contract.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's not, it's not a subscription, because this is a hardware situation. Most of the subscription pieces that are in the software world, you've got a lot more leverage because those are just year-to-year, and you can get out and get into something else without that big upfront initial investment. And so these are, you know, these are the evolutions of the industry. I haven't been in front of you with an amendment like this in 16 years, and it's really because we try to find other creative ways to absorb those costs. But with full subscriptions now with software, you really can't buy anything without a subscription. Instead of a smaller upfront and a smaller ongoing, it's just, it's an extended subscription cost. And so it just puts pressure on the budget as you move forward. So we're just, I'm working with Deb and the team to just continue to continually improve our budget process to accommodate those costs, you know, over time.
Who's the acquiring company?
In this case, it's DDN, which is Data Delivery Networks. They are the biggest dog of all of the hardware storage vendors. The one we bought was Tintri, which was probably 85th percentile. So it's not like we were with a small mom and pop that got acquired. I mean, it's kind of like Microsoft acquiring Dell at that point. I mean, it's tricky. When you're with a really small software company or hardware company, you really think, okay, they could get acquired. But when you get up in that 75th, 80th percentile, you don't assume they're going to get acquired. But these deals do get done from time to time. And our, we're finding that the, the industry's a little more cutthroat when it comes to their end-of-life expectations now than they, than they have been in the past. So we're building that into our future budget. We just don't want to set up a big contingency fund to cover these things and have a bunch of money sitting there so that you guys can't use it in the community. We, we're just handling it through an amendment, which is something I haven't done before because it hasn't been necessary. We've found other ways to absorb it. But it's sort of the nature of the beast in this case. Does that help, John?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it?
Well, we're gonna talk about.
Yep, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, perfect. Now, now we're gonna move on to a policy, consideration of policy on grants.
Okay, so as you all know, a couple months ago, it was requested that we take a look at our grant-making process, budget and policies. So Lisa and I and John have done a lot of work over the last couple months. I think you're familiar with what was emailed out last week or two weeks ago in terms of recommendations. So just wanted to have the opportunity for you all to discuss this together if needed, and ask questions if you have any. So there was kind of two issues that needed to be resolved. The first is what's happening immediately with Betterment Grants, funding their sponsorships. And as we noted, we were gonna look to add a couple thousand dollars, $25,000 to each of those buckets to accommodate the sponsorships that got rolled in to your Betterment pots. And then we sent out the sponsorship link Monday, yesterday, or, yeah, Monday, to everybody who has inquired about sponsorships for 2023. So they have a two-week window to apply for events this year.
One week.
Okay.
They have till May 1st.
Yep. And then on, starting July 1, we'll start to hopefully get into a new cadence, and the community can start to expect, you know, just some different deadlines. Instead of the ongoing sponsorships being open year-round all the time, it would be the same window as CBGs. So what we're proposing is both CBGs and sponsorships be open, the usual CBG time, December 1 through February 28. Your CBG limit will be raised to accommodate rolling sponsorships into that. Lisa and Kelsey will go through the list and pull out all of what we're calling the universal sponsorships. So ones that are not specific to your districts or tied to like a project that you are personally working on. So those will kind of go into a separate bucket, and then the rest will go into your CBG pot, which will be a little bit higher again to accommodate that. What else on Betterment and sponsorship? Sponsorship cap of 5,000. I think we'll work with you each individually on flexibility between, you know, if, can they apply for both a sponsorship and a CBG? We can work through that, I think, on a case-by-case basis. But setting an overall budget for CBGs and sponsorships of 1.2 million dollars. When it comes to development grants, I think the, the two big changes there are moving to one open application period per year instead of two. So that'll be a July 1 through August 30 application period. And then the big change there is that they need to have 50% of the funds already raised. And then recommending an overall budget of $2 million for development grants. And some of the reasons we came to these conclusions were just primarily staff time and thinking through, you know, Lisa's workflow and how much more work it is to add sponsorships in and doing that on a year-round basis. So we thought that having one period for CBGs and sponsorships, let her get all those applications in, get through, make the awards, start tackling the reporting, and then flow right into development and clear, kind of clear the deck, start with development, and do that the next half of the year. So I think we feel good about that workflow. Kelsey's been doing a great job helping Lisa with some of the increased reporting. So I think we're, we found a good balance there. So that's what the proposal is. I think, open to feedback or questions.
I got a few things, and we can just have this informal discussion here. So I, I'm sure Lisa's probably talked to all of us at some point or other. And I've heard her talk multiple times about the different nuances of the grant process and some of the things we have to work through and looking at maybe how other organizations do it. I, I'm extremely pleased that you came up with, come up with a policy for us to consider because I just, as an example, and I think we've probably all been guilty of it at some point, you know, somebody comes in in March or April and says, hey, I didn't get my grant in, you know. I know the deadline was February 28, but I sure still wish I could apply. We go, okay. The next thing you know, it's July, they're coming in for a community Betterment grant, and the deadline was, I just, if we're gonna have a deadline, I think we need to have a hard deadline, and that's it. You got from December 1, which is three months, by the way, to fill out a grant application. And, and the sponsorships, from what I've seen, number one, it seemed like they increased significantly. When Sarah would bring them around or whatever, and there'd just be more and more and more, and the numbers got higher and higher and higher. You know, people are gonna ask, why not, right? But facts case are, most of these are annual events that, when they say annual event, that means they know they're gonna have an event on a certain date. There's no reason why someone applying for a sponsorship couldn't adhere to a December 1 to February 28 timeline to apply for their event sponsorship for that year. Now, frankly, personally, I don't think they should be able to apply for a sponsorship and a Betterment grant. I, I, I know, that, that's just my opinion. But I, but I think that's, that's extremely reasonable to ask them to have that specific deadline. So I.
I appreciate your feedback, you know, just from, you know, a professional grant management system. And like we've discussed, Supervisor Hocken Smith, that most grant programs aren't open-ended.
Right.
Because you are tracking every dollar that's spent from these CBG, CDGs and sponsorships now. So in order to keep that professionalism, that consistency and transparency with all of these awards, I appreciate that feedback because I think it puts it more to the level that it needs to be at.
Yeah. And I think it's gonna take some time to get the word out to applicants who applied in the past, that historically have applied whenever they chose to apply, that this, this is, this is the way we're gonna be operating in the future. So, yeah, okay. And, and frankly, I like the idea of having a requirement that the applicant needs to have raised 50% of the funding for the project. You know, when, when we have, and, and I'll give you an example, that when we did the playground at Four Mile Elementary, the school district came in at, I think, 65,000. The PTA came in with an additional 15,000. They had already done all that work on their own. They didn't come in and said, we want 120-some-thousand dollars for this playground, and we're not doing anything. And that, we've got, we've gotten to that, you know. I think you gotta have some skin in the game. You gotta have people out willing to raise some money, which, we're always designed to, to, I think, at least advocate for filling a gap. Sometime it may be 50% or a significant gap, but there's gotta be some, some groundwork done by the applicant to show that, that they're not just wanting the county to fund the entire project.
And I think you'll be surprised that, you know, I had a supervisor on a recent CDG want, you know, they came in and applied for 100%, and their feedback was they needed to have, you know, some, some of their own funding within that project. It was one phone call. They, they immediately had the amount of money that that supervisor was recommending. So that they, they were participants within their own project financially.
Yeah.
I, I think this is good. I'm a little concerned about the, so events and sponsorships are gonna be wrapped into Betterment. Is that correct?
It'll be the same application period. There'll be two separate.
Forms.
Applications.
Right.
So, and then, you know, the, the work part on our end will be if there's one that's like Beavertale, it's, you know, the Beavertale Bluegrass Festival, that's gonna go in your CBG bucket. If there's one that's more universal, like Yankee Doodle Pops or something like that, then that'll go, that'll get pulled out and put in a separate pot.
You'll have two, you'll have separate spreadsheets.
Yep.
So you'll have your CBG spreadsheets, and you'll have a sponsorship spreadsheet. And then I can carve those out by your district as well, just like we do with CBGs right now. So you'll have two separate sets. You'll have sponsorships, and you'll have your community Betterment. They're separate applications.
And the CBG number is gonna go up. So I don't, I see that as being a good thing because we can absorb some of these sponsorships, like Beavertale Bluegrass Festival, for example. If that was really even the CBGs where they were, that'd be tough to start pulling that out of your CBGs and, and plugging it into sponsorships. But if we're getting more money for it, then I think that probably works. You know, one reason this came about, this whole discussion originated kind of several months ago, was West Des Moines came along, and they've kind of dialed this back a little bit, but they came along and said they got guidance that you couldn't, according to the state auditor, you couldn't give money to nonprofits. Governments couldn't, period, paragraph. It's all there is to it.
Couldn't what?
Couldn't give money to nonprofits, period. So way, it's a violation of the, of the Constitution and all this business. They dialed that back, obviously, as we all know. And, but I think one reason that we looked at this was because our sponsorship piece didn't include any language about public purpose and what the public purpose is and, and, you know, tracking the expenditures and those kinds of things. So we're doing, so that's why I went to CBGs to begin with, because we do all that with CBGs. So this will now include all that language with sponsorship. So that should solve that problem.
And the other piece to that is the state auditor had a recommendation of tracking the, the expenditures of those, you know, whether, grants. So this sponsorship, now, you know, what will be added is that piece of tracking for, like I said, every dollar that's spent, so that that's transparent for anybody that, you know, has any questions regarding that.
Good thing. Then the total amount on CDGs, 2 million. Let's say that Prairie Meadows, money comes from Prairie Meadows, obviously, we all know that. So let's say they're having a really good year, and is there any way to adjust that, or is 2 million historically the right number, or what do you think?
I think that would have to be, you know, discussion with the board. I know from John and I's perspective and going through the budget process this year and looking at some of the things that could happen to our budget in coming years due to state legislation, I think we want to start talking about Prairie Meadows money more as how can it help contribute to things that we are doing here within Polk County. Not our, not our operations, not like.
I totally agree with that.
Staff salary, those kinds of things.
I'm on board.
But how can we, how can we use Prairie Meadows money for some of the one-time expenditures that we would normally use general fund money from?
No, totally on board.
So not necessarily.
I think that makes total sense.
Okay.
I have no problem with that at all. I guess I just think when, when Lisa comes around, we start talking about CDGs, and I say, well, 75 sounds right, or 60 sounds right, or 50 sounds right. I don't know what the effect is on the total number. So now I will. That'll, that'll help. So I think that's, that's probably a good step.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And aren't we going to talk a little bit about maybe adding economic development in our budget? Have we talked about that, or are you still?
Yeah, I mean, we've got the economic development bucket as well, and that's where things like the NDC project and things like that.
Right.
Have, have come out of. So that'll be a part of the.
A separate issue.
Yeah, a separate issue when it comes to talking about Prairie Meadows funds. Yep.
Yeah, I, if you're asking today, is this the right way? Yes. I don't think a week was probably long enough to let folks know that we're changing our way on sponsorships, and we'll just have to, you know.
Well, these are just going out to.
These are the people who are expecting it.
Organizations that have reached out.
Yeah. Their what?
They're expecting it.
These are the people who have reached out in the last, like, two months and been like, hey, I really wanted to apply for a sponsorship. How do I do that? We put them on a list, so they would have gotten notice. I mean, they should be able to click the link and apply within five minutes.
And those, and those people I've had communication with. We weren't publicizing it far and wide, you know, to everybody. But I think, you know, we'll have to talk about the communication plan and rolling these new rules out, obviously updating the website and making it crystal clear. We can probably, we've already downloaded a list of all the email addresses of past sponsorship and grant recipients, so we can send a mass email out to them. And there's no doubt, there'll be some growing pains because we're changing the expectations on people.
Sure.
But over time, like has happened in the past, they will adapt to that and just start knowing that this is the time of year I go to Polk County for my, my yearly funding, so.
I, I appreciate the guidance. I, I do. I think this is a good policy. I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's laid out well. And it's, I think, thoughtful way to approach something like this. I, I think it's always a struggle. And as Tom said, you know, when groups come, you know, trailing in late and want immediate detention, and, and it's like, it puts you in a really uncomfortable spot. And you can just say, we've got this policy, and we're adhering to it, and, you know, try next year. You know, that's, that's really, for me, it's, it's having that, you know, that guidance to say, this is it. This is the way it is. And, and just, you know, from the perspective of the work that, that Lisa does day in and day out, you know, coordinating with these people and trying to get expenses. I mean, you do an amazing job keeping all of these things straight. I don't know how you do it. But I admire all of your, I admire all of your thoroughness with, with getting expenses in and doing all the, all the communication to and from the grant recipients. And, and I know some of these are like little organizations, non-professional, that are trying to. that are trying to, volunteers in many cases, and, and, you know, for sticking with it and getting, getting through all that. Thank you, Lisa.
I appreciate that. Thank you, I really do.
The problem we have, Lisa, I know you know probably better than, you know, especially the smaller organizations Matt mentions are, just use neighborhood associations as an example. And, you know, they'll change leadership. What happens is, and I've got one out, Sheridan Gardens now, where the president of the neighborhood association resigned, he brought all the money back down here, but the rest of the organization wants to keep going. So, but there's no grant reporting, they can't find the guy that, that, that was the treasurer, and, and now, so... So, do you tell them until you get that information, you can never apply again? I know we've worked through it before informally, but if, I don't, and I don't have the answer to that either. I don't know how to fix that.
Well, I, well, Sheridan Gardens, who you're talking about, they returned their money. So, they returned the money that they had remaining from twenty-nineteen grant, and their one from twenty-twenty-two.
That was just an example.
So, that, yeah, so that funding's returned in and back to central accounting. However, what you're describing, yes, I absolutely agree with that. And I think that that's, you know, like we've talked about, I'm gonna take your advisement on those case by case, because I don't think we're gonna punish a neighborhood organization with communication out to the community of events and what's going on in their neighborhoods. And I think that's the common sense approach by you guys, so...
Yeah, and I don't know if there's any more rigid rules or what have you that we can put in place to, to prevent that, because it, it, neighborhood association is a perfect example. The ones that, the ones that change leadership, and then no one knows where the receipts are, no one knows where the invoices are, well, so-and-so moved to Oregon, and they quit, and, you know, whatever.
Post-pronews were the worst.
Yeah.
And they had little leagues too, that happened to them too.
Yeah, little leagues, they're bad too.
We really, 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 and I know you do the best you can, encourage them to get the report again, and you have to spend multiple phone calls and emails, trying to make sure they get all their stuff done. At the end of the day, some of them don't get it completed.
And, you know, and, and we can be flexible with things like that. I mean, at the end of the day, these are guidelines for you all to follow and for us to encourage you to follow. But there's always gonna be a level of discretion and flexibility there. I think what we're hoping is kind of the hard and fast rules is the deadline, the overall budget, and then, you know, some of the, just the fact that we're reporting and stating public purpose on those. I think those are kind of the overarching, hard and fast kind of guidelines that we're hoping to stick to.
One thing I would say, and, and, is that the idea of scoring the grants, I know we've talked about it before, and I think it makes sense in some cases. The only thing I would be reluctant about, and the example that I would use is MPO, SDBG Funding Subcommittee I serve on, and the staff came up with, staff came up with a scoring tool to utilize. And, you know, at, at the end of the day, the SDBG Funding Subcommittee collectively makes decisions which projects that are, have applications, active applications, receive the funding. And the scoring is one thing that's considered, for sure. Here's one other thing, okay, this project scored a ninety, this only scored a sixty. But inevitably, you'll have an argument from someone, well, how come my project didn't get funded? It scored ninety, and the project you're funding only got sixty. But there are multiple other things that the subcommittee looks at, about regionalism and, and, and different infrastructure problems that have been caused, but, so, you know...
We're not doing scoring, are we?
Well, it's here, it's in here. It's a, it's a future we may discuss it.
No, it's an idea.
I'm a no.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we do that at Bravo, we, we score these grants, it's like eighty-eight of them is all. But still, we score them, and it's not a bad way to go, because you assign numeric values to them, that seems objective everything, but it is a lot of work, it is a lot of time to do.
I, I think we're making some significant changes. We are, that, that development grant, that when we say fifty percent, you have to match fifty percent, that's gonna knock a lot of people out.
Or in.
Or, well...
I mean, they may, they may, I mean, they should be using our money as leverage, you know, that's...
They should, that's exactly right.
But that's a problem, and, and that's what I was gonna ask too, now that you're talking about this. So, you know, a lot of organizations, I assume, what I would, what I would say to Lisa when I call in to start the application process is, I see you had a fifty percent. You know, we were hoping that we could get a commitment from Polk County, so we can leverage these other organizations, saying, you know, and, and, and maybe that's an option. Maybe informally you say, you know, the county's interested in helping, but, I gotta, but you can't say, okay, we're gonna give you the first fifty percent, then go raise the other fifty.
No, nope, come in with fifty percent.
I don't think that's an option.
I don't either. You gotta come in.
You could use a leverage, though, if county, you say the county wants, wants to help, but I have to raise fifty percent of the project before I can, before I can talk to them, and that's...
I mean, that's what Prairie Meadows does, they say to those folks, you gotta have fifty percent before you come and see us.
Getting back to Angela's comment on the, on the timeframes, I'm a little, I was a little uncomfortable with that myself. Because I gotta think, I, I think you probably knocked out ninety percent of the people. People that have called in about sponsorship grants, probably are ninety percent of the people you're dealing with anyway, right? But, is there anybody out there that we gave grant, sponsorship grant to over the past year that hasn't called in?
Oh, yeah.
And then it's gonna be, it's gonna come to be Fourth of July or something, and they go, oh, you know, we called Polk County about a sponsorship, and we're gonna say, no, you had, you're two months late.
I tell you what, I bet it only happens one time.
Right.
I bet they only miss it one time.
It should have a little more flexibility.
When you moved, Supervisor Bruno, when you guys moved on community development grants to stay within that cycle, and I had a board member to recommend it, not to accept those out of cycle. That was Supervisor Conley. And once that was made, and they were, and they knew, they adjusted to that immediately. They pay attention to those timeframes, they, they call, they email, they say...
No, I get it, I just, I just wonder this year if we're gonna be a little more flexible.
On, on sponsorships, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think we can talk about how to be flexible, but I think the risk in continuing to be flexible is we miss the moment of learning.
And I want to talk about lots of grants, that's not my topic.
Right, and I, you know, the, the problem, what I see the biggest issue is, is when you open and shut, it's not a professional management system.
And we will never adjust their expectations if we keep allowing it.
Well, here's the deal, the people that have come back year after year after year, they're out of luck. The new people that have never come to Polk County, and all of a sudden they're gonna have a big gala, and they're hoping to get twenty-five-hundred dollars from us, or whatever, no more than five thousand, obviously, they're gonna be hurt, because they've heard all along that Polk County will give them a sponsorship, and now they didn't know.
I had one call just the other day, never got one before ever, what's the deal with sponsorships? I heard about this, I told them, like, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing. Perfect, we'll call you in December. I mean, there was not even a second...
I, I think that is extremely reasonable. I, I, I'm not interested in, in any other flexibility over and above that from a time... Three months, if you got three months to apply for a CBG, and we're gonna put the sponsorships into or events, and you can't apply for, in three months, for an event that happens annually?
It's two months.
Then, then, then I think, and, and, and I agree from a policy standpoint, that when you're talking to constituent, constituent out there, that you can say, you know what? We adopted a new policy, it's, it's, it's consistent policy, and if I'm gonna, if you make one exception, all you gotta do is make one exception, and then we're in trouble.
Exactly, future forward.
Then we're in trouble, you did it for so-and-so, now you gotta do it for so-and-so, and then, then it just, it opens up the hole.
Is that right, future forward, I just think, well, it isn't three months though, it's one week they have right now, this year.
You're talking about right now.
Yeah, we're talking about right now, that, I don't, I'm okay starting July one with the new policy. I'm talking about right now, the people that are out there that don't have a clue on what we're doing. You gave them one week, and that's only the people that you've talked to or got an email from.
So, are you wanting to email the entire list of people who have gotten sponsorships in the past?
I don't know, but I don't, I don't think...
And that would be the only way.
That was, that was our original conversation, Supervisor Conley, that we, were we just going to notify the ones that have reached out, or were we gonna notify everybody? The advisement that I got, and the feedback that I got, were the people that had reached out, because we were already in the position underneath Sarah, that we were at four-hundred-and-fifty-some thousand of sponsorships. We don't have the capacity for that right now, I don't. So, that was part of that conversation. If, if, if you have people that reach out to you, I've met with all of you to say, hey, is there anybody in addition that you need me to reach out to? And I'll do that. I've got, I've gotten some from some board members, and I've reached out to those people, and I've made contact. If there's other people, a few, that trickle in, and you want, you want them at it, I don't have an issue with that. But I think opening up the complete volume of that, I don't, I don't think we have the capacity for that right now.
Here's what I say, I, I'm in Bob's camp on this. You gave, it's May first, we're starting our new policy July one. So, if we get any, which maybe, might be a handful, I would say a handful, from us, if we get a handful of them, I say we have to recognize.
I agree.
You probably got most of them.
I agree.
Your calling probably got most of them already, right?
Pardon?
I think your calling probably got most of them already.
I, I agree, for now, yeah.
Ninety percent probably, so there's just a few probably left out there.
I think you'll hear from some people in the fall, that's what I think you'll hear.
The fall will be too late.
Well, can I ask a question? I, I, it's just, this, and I probably am not on the same page as you, you two, but, but what I say is that no, no deadline we put on them is ever gonna be acceptable to some, some folks. July, you give them to July one, then they're gonna say, oh, July third, well, you know, I could've, I could've, should've, would've. Okay, well, yeah, you could've, should've, would've, but you didn't do. So, then we gotta tell them no then, and there's no, there's no nice time to say no.
But July one is the deadline, July, we, we are opening it up July one to whatever.
To development.
I mean, to development, and then come December, that's when they gotta, and we're advertising, we're gonna put it on our website, we're gonna tell everybody, we don't even have a campaign yet to say what we're doing. We're just arbitrarily saying, May first, we're cutting you off.
We set policies all the time without putting them out in, 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 in press releases.
Well, and I think part of the conversation too, that, you know, Lisa touched on, is I think the hope from a staffing perspective is like a clean pause to kind of clear the deck, get every, all the reporting done, and then just kind of start fresh with the new, you know, deadlines, new processes.
Okay, well, you guys make sure you say no to all those people, 'cause I am not.
You know, I can say no.
Don't let them call me.
I know, you have a, you, you say no pretty easy, I get it.
Doctor no.
Yeah, she is doctor no.
Send them to me.
Like, like I said, I think that you put parameters on, I get your, your one-week issue.
We can extend that.
And like I said, if you want us to extend that, but that is, do you want that to go to everybody? Or do you want that to go to the people that have reached out? 'Cause you're gonna be telling people no, 'cause you're not gonna have enough money within your toll.
I didn't say to email everybody, I said, we're gonna get a handful of calls that are gonna say, hey, I didn't know anything about this.
Right, so that's what I want to be clear on.
I mean, part of it too is though, we can outreach and not say, hey, we're inviting you to apply, but hey, just new policy, new guidelines are in place, make sure, mark your calendar for December one for sponsorship to open up, and then we'll see what kind of feedback we get. I mean, if we get a bunch of replies and phone calls from there, then we can have another conversation.
I like that idea.
This discussion today that we're having will be helpful, I mean, I don't know if anybody picks it up or whatever, but I think, when Angela and I talked about this earlier, this is one of the reasons that we have this board-staff discussion in an open, public meeting, is that so that people would have an opportunity. Now, granted, we know, we're fully aware, and everybody pays attention to what we're doing down here in our, in our board-staff discussions, but that, you know, we'll, we'll have to see how that, that plays out, but I...
So, I, so you're suggesting that possibly we could send out a notice to say, hey, look, we're gonna change our policy, here's the dates, make sure you get it in on time, and we'll see what happens, right? And somebody may say, oh my God, I gotta hurry up and get something in, can I have another week? Or can I file, or whatever?
I mean, the, the communication has already gone out to the people who have already reached out asking about sponsorships. Here's the link, apply by May first, if you need to extend it a week or two, that's fine. I'm suggesting another communication to all of our grant recipients ever, that just says, this is the new deadlines, if you have a sponsorship, an event, and you're wanting a sponsorship, mark your calendar for December first to apply.
Okay.
And then we'll see what feedback we get. If we get a firestorm of emails and calls, then we can revisit it.
I like that.
Okay, then we'll at least know what we're dealing with.
Yes, we'll know if people hate us or love us by then. I'm good with that.
Good. Send out that email that you're talking about to everyone, July first, at the beginning of our fiscal year.
Oh, okay, you mean with the, with the updates?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, so not to complicate...
Sure, yeah.
What we're, what we're doing now, the, the one-week window that we have, separating that from sending out the email to everyone.
And just so you, just so everyone knows, they are given reminders through the portal of when they need to apply. So, it isn't like they don't know that CBGs or sponsorships or developments coming. They, development, we don't, we don't send out reminders, but betterment, we do. They, they get, you know, like sixty-day notification, and then I think we've moved it to ninety, sixty, and thirty.
And people, people will adjust, it'll take, but people will, clearly will adjust to these deadlines. It might take a little bit of time, like I said, you miss out on one grant cycle, and you won't do it again.
Right.
You know?
It's not a life or death situation.
It's not, no. These events aren't gonna go away, because they don't get two thousand dollars from the county, but they'll know, oh gosh, if I wanna get that next year, I'm gonna have to apply on time.
The max is five thousand anyways.
Right, it's not like it's...
So, it's not gonna be...
Yeah.
Right.
But I, I, I love the CBGs, I think, I think raising that fifty percent, I think that's great.
CDGs?
CBGs, CDGs.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
I have a question then, if I can, I shouldn't know the answer, but, so, when you talk about the match, does in-kind and volunteer count towards that, or strictly a cash match? Because sometimes grants provide provisions for organizations...
A lot of people in-kind is a match.
I would, I would agree, because you have companies donating supplies or equipment...
Or labor.
Or labor.
Architecture.
Right.
Yeah, I think we have to consider that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so.
Volunteerism and community engagement, some credit for that, I think.
Otherwise, you lose, you'll, you'll lose that type of support.
Yeah, that's a good point, so we will consider that.
It's just maybe hard to put a number on, I'm not sure, I suppose you can.
They can.
Yeah.
I think, I think they'll rise to the occasion.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, great work, I'm, I'm glad we were finally getting there.
I'd also call TJ out, he just walked out the room, but his staff have worked really hard with Lisa and I over the last six months or so to make some enhancements to our online application and reporting. So, we asked them to help us automate some of the reporting functions and reminder functions, so...
Adam Drayer has been very responsive to needs that we've had, and, you know, I just emailed him, I think it was this morning, and already, he responds very quickly, very efficiently, so...
So, they've helped us with a lot of process improvements.
So, just so I know, we're gonna send out an email to everybody, saying we're doing something different. We're gonna put it on our website, pronto.
Yep. I mean, we can put it in some of our normal channels, you know, Polk Future, Quarterly Citizen, all those kinds of things, we can do that.
See what kind of feedback we get.
Yeah.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Okay. Good work.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.